Hey guys, welcome to the Fiable Student Study Session for AP Stats. This is a Q&amp;A session hosted by myself Derek and I'm along with Chris here, he'll be helping us out. So first of all, and just a quick plan for today, this is our AP Stats Study Session. This is mainly for a Q&amp;A, so we're opening it up to you guys to ask questions. You can put them in the Questions tab and we'll do our best to answer your questions. If we run out of time, or if we have more time at the end, we can discuss Unit 7 errors as an overview, or we can work through a practice FRQ we have prepared. So with that, we'd like to open it up to you guys, you can put questions in the chat. What are you thinking?
Yeah, sounds good.
So anything in particular you guys are looking for, for the help? Otherwise, we can just move on to the Errors Overview, or go to the FRQ.
Just in general, any topics that you guys find hard or want to review? That's not bad, it's pretty good.
How can we get you up to a 10? What do you need help with?
Are all of you guys doing well?
Sure, so we have a request about the FRQ. So the one we have prepared is from last year's exam, it's number four and it's about a significance test. So I'm just gonna read it and we can start walking through it. "Tumbleweed commonly found in the Western United States is the dried structure of certain plants that are blown by the wind. Cochia, a type of plant that turns into tumbleweed at the end of the summer, is a problem for farmers because it takes nutrients away from soil that would otherwise go to more beneficial plants. Scientists are concerned that cochia plants are becoming resistant to the most commonly used herbicide glyphosate. In 2014, 19.7% of 61 randomly selected cochia plants were resistant to glyphosate. In 2017, 38.5% of 52 randomly selected cochia plants were resistant to glyphosate. Do the data provide convincing statistical evidence at the level of 0.05 that there has been an increase in the proportion of all cochia plants that are resistant to glyphosate?" So off the bat, can we get someone who knows what type of test we're gonna run through here? Using this given information, what kind of tests would we do if this was an FRQ on your exam coming up?
Because one of the points on an inference question is you have to name the procedure. So what do you guys think this procedure is? Well, for starters, do you guys know if it will be a Z-test or a T-test?
Two-sample Z-test, yeah, so basically it's gonna be a two-proportion Z-test because we're dealing with percentages here. But yeah. So moving on, we are going to wanna start with naming our null and alternate hypotheses. So we're asking if the data provide convincing statistical evidence that there has been an increase in the proportion of all cochia plants. So if the null hypothesis is true here, then there has not been an increase and the proportion in 2014 and 2017 will be equal. So the way we'd say that is P sub 14 equals P sub 17, that's an easy way to do that. And then just make sure to use words to write out what that means. So you could say the proportion of cochia plants resistant to glyphosate is the same in 2014 as it is in 2017. So that's, that's our null hypothesis. And we're gonna be testing that against the alternate hypothesis, which in this case is that P17 is greater than P14. Now, the reason that there's a greater than and not a not equal to is specifically because of that word "increase" in the problem. If, if that would've said if there is a change in the proportion, then we would've used it's not equal to and we would've found on both sides of the normal curve the probability that it's shaded on both sides. But in this case, since we're only looking at there's an increase, our alternate hypothesis is that P17 is greater than P14. So the way we describe that alternate hypothesis is that the proportion of cochia plants resistant to glyphosate is higher in 2017 than it was in 2014. That's the way I like to start, just naming what we know. Continuing with that, we can go from the data and start labeling our P hats 14, which is our sample proportion from 2014. Now, an interesting thing about this problem is that it gives us a percent instead of a number out of 61, for example, in 2014. So what I did was I took 19.7% and I multiplied that by 61 and it got me about 12. So because of rounding, you could say there's about 12 of that 61 were resistant in 2014. So that would be our P hat 14. Same thing with our P hat 17. 38.5% times that 52 is gonna give us about a 20 that are resistant in 2017. So the next thing we have to consider, do you guys know what is special about a two-proportion Z-test? What do we have to do with those numbers going through the test? This thing only applies to this particular, this particular test. It's called when you pool the data and you get a pooled C because the reason we do that is we're testing our null hypothesis that they're equal. So if they are equal, then there's no difference between them and they can all be added together anyway. So yeah, in this case, we need to do a pooled P and to do that, we are going to break every math rule we've known and add fractions just by adding the numerator and the denominator. This is the only case we'll ever do that. So that'd be simply adding our 12 plus our 20 from before in the numerator to get 32 and our 61 and 52 to get 113. And that would give us our pooled C of 32 over 113. We'll, we'll need to use that for later, that'll be involved in our standard error. So next, we need to go over our conditions before actually doing the test. Chris, do you wanna talk a little bit about the conditions?
Yes, I'll do that. Conditions are very important in statistics, you know, you can't really do the type of model, or T-model, or Z-model, or anything if you don't state your conditions. And one of the big things is it's important to differentiate between your conditions and assumptions. So we said this was a two-prop Z-test. Like, the technical name for it would be a two-sample proportion test, Z-test, for a difference in population proportions. So do you guys know any conditions from your stats class, or any that you remember that you use for a two-sample Z-test or proportion test? Just in the chat, type out if you know any of these conditions. Conditions that go with a two-probs B-test, anyone? Random sampling, yes. Independence. Something else, which I forgot.
Yeah, that's alright, the last one we're missing here is normality of the sampling distribution.
Yeah. So basically, there are two categories of assumptions and conditions. The first one is you wanna make sure all your data is independent. So random sampling, whenever, but there's a big difference here. There's a difference between random sampling and random assignment. If you pay attention in the question, we're doing a study, not an experiment. We're just collecting data. So what's important here is to write down when you're doing your random condition is that we had a random sample. Secondly, you wanna make sure that you have more than, less than 10% of your population. Because again, you know, when you're sampling without replacement, you know, we're not using the same plant twice here. So we gotta show that we have less than 10% of the population, so the probability is not changing every time. And then you also wanna say that, you know, one plant doesn't affect the other, or that the groups are independent, or something. Because you wanna mention that something about the two groups being independent when you're doing a two-sam versus the one-sam. So if you mention random, something about independence, or less than 10%, you've got that independence area covered. The second part of your assumptions is normality, you know, because you wanna justify. Because you just said we're using a Z-test. And so, you know, I asked you, you know, how the heck are you allowed to use a Z-test? So you have to tell me why it's okay to use a Z-test. You could say that in a T-test, you could talk about, you know, population distributions and stuff, but in a proportion test, how you show that is you say that the number of successes times the number of failures are all more than or equal to 10. So you guys might remember that you have to show that NP and NQ, or NP and N times 1 minus P are more than 10 for both samples. You know, you gotta show that for sample 1 and sample 2. And that's where people sometimes get confused. And one of the big things is, as Derek said, to use the pooled, pooled proportion here. Because when we're using a two-proportion Z-test, our null hypothesis is that they're the same, you know, there is no difference. P1 minus P2 equals 0, or P1 equals P2. So we're saying that they come from the same population, which means they should have technically the same variation. You know, that's why we don't use these proportions individually, but we combine our number of successes and we combine our number of trials and we find a pooled proportion. And then that's what you wanna use in your NP and NQ. So talk about randomness, talk about independence and say something about them being independent and less than 10%. And your third one is you wanna show that it's a normal model. So NP pooled proportion more than or equal to 10.
Yeah, exactly. So once we get all of our conditions down, then we're basically done. We just have to do the test and that's probably, you know, maybe the easiest part. Once we get all of this writing down, you know, on this exam you guys are having coming up, you, your calculators won't be required. So it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. But in this case, we would just plug this into our calculator under the two-proportion Z-test. And we would find out, I'll go to the next slide. So this is just a summary of what we've been through. We chose our two-proportion Z-test. We are testing that the null hypothesis, where they are the same, or one minus the other is 0, against the fact that the other difference is greater than 0. So that would mean 2017 is bigger than that proportion in 2014. So on the right, you'll see your pooled P, that's how you convert that. And then this is the equation you're gonna use to find your Z-value. The denominator here in this Z-equation is also right off of your equation sheet. That's really nice. You do have to show this equation that you know what you're doing instead of just plugging it in your calculator and giving the result. You gotta show the readers that you know what you're doing. So the best way to do that is to give these equations and put them down. To summarize the conditions, you have to show that you know they're random, the two samples need to be independent, they haven't influenced each other. The sample size is less than 10% of the respective population size. That's what we were talking about before with this independence condition, where you need to make sure you're sampling less than 10% of the population size. The way to do that, if you go to the problem, you'll see that in 2014, there were 61 randomly selected. You can simply state that I assume there are more than 610 cochia plants in 2014. That's a safe assumption, there's plants everywhere, you can assume that. And same for 2017, you can assume there's more than 520 in the population. So that's an easy way to show that. And then again, for our normal sampling distribution, we have our NP, we have our N1 minus P, but remember, we're using our pooled C for that. As long as there are more than 10, which in this case they are, we can go on doing the test and finding this result. Your calculator will give you a Z-value of about 2.21 and the corresponding P-value of 0.0135. So the appropriate conclusion here, because we originally had a 0.05 level, is that there is convincing statistical evidence to conclude that the proportion of resistant plants in the 2017 population of cochia plants is greater than the proportion of resistant plants in the 2014 population of cochia plants. Do we have any questions on any part of that free response?
How confident do you guys feel about the parts of an inference test? Like, if you were given, you know, a question and asked to do an inference test, which you won't, probably on this year's exam, but you still have to remember, you know, you don't have a calculator, a graphing calculator. Inference is still a pretty big part of AP Stats. So they will test you over it somehow. Like, I've heard that they'll just give you the Z-star, or they'll just give you the P-value and be like, you know, what decision would you make? And you need to maybe not know the calculator stuff as much, but you still need to know the entirety of the procedure and how you would do it. So how confident do you guys feel for this test?
Yeah, so going off of that, it may be easy to sit back and say, well, I don't need my calculator, they're not gonna test me on this, I don't need to know this. But the reality is, we're not gonna outsmart the AP writers and we're taking an AP Stats test and they're gonna test us on the content. So we do need to know this. We wanna know how comfortable you guys are, if there's anything else we can do. Otherwise, we can go through a unit review on a common mistake of errors, type 1, type 2 errors, things like that.
One, I've looked at some past practice questions they're putting for the 2020 year for AP Stats. And some of the questions that I think were, might be tough for some of the students is they've started asking, you know, not what the conditions are, but why do we do the conditions? You know, what is the reason that we're doing the conditions in the first place? So if, if that's something you guys wanna go over right now real quick, just type yes in the chat, or just type no if that's not something you're interested in. But I've seen several questions recently on the 2020 practice exams that have asked, why do we check this condition? So is that something you guys wanna go into real quick? You can just type yes or no in the chat.
Remember, if there's any, any time you have another question about anything entirely different, you can ask that as well. But it looks like we can go through the conditions.
Yes, that's good, because it's, I think it's gonna be a pretty important topic. And as Derek said, you know, if you can go to the Ask the Question tab and then he asks, any other questions or just in the chat? Derek, can you switch over to the conditions slide?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so if you look at the first condition, you know, no matter what type of test we do, there's something about randomness. So there are two types of, you know, random conditions in statistics. And one of them goes with random sample, random sampling, and the other one is random assignment. So why do we do random sampling? Okay, well, this goes back to that unit, remember, about having different types of bias and having different types of quote-unquote "bad" samples, where you would have, you know, volunteer response bias, or non-response bias, or bad wording, and things like that. So the reason we have a random sample is we wanna make sure that our sample is representative of the population. You know, because we're going to, the entire point of inference is you look at a few people, you collect data from that sample and you wanna make a decision about the entire population. So if our sample doesn't reflect what the population is, how can we make, you know, a conclusion in the first place? So the random condition is actually very important because the main reason is you wanna sample that is representative of the entire population, so you can go ahead with the inference. So if a test on, question on test asks you the importance of random sampling, you would say to make sure our sample is representative of the population and we can continue our inference. The second type of random is random assignment. When do you use that? You use that in experiments. I know, it is tough, yes, very important to know. Random sampling studies, you wanna make sure your sample is like your population. Second type is random assignment. So, and that's what you do in experiments, you know, you wanna make sure that if you have two groups, you wanna put them in each group randomly. Why do you do that? To eliminate confounding variables, you know? We don't wanna have a reason to put people in a different group and that other variable might, you know, change your results and have an effect on it. So we wanna randomly assign them to a treatment group to eliminate that confounding, or some of you might've learned as a lurking variable. But that's the main reason. Random sampling, make sure sample is representative of the population. Random assignment, to make sure we eliminate confounding variables and we don't have other variables affecting our data in an experiment. So random sampling, observational study, random assignment, experiment. The second one we have here is independence. And, and that's a pretty big deal. You guys, when you did the probability unit, you guys, you know, said, is this probability independent of this probability? Well, we wanna make sure that all our trials are independent, or at least close to independent. We realize that a lot of things, you know, especially when we're sampling without replacement, it's not 100% independent. That's why we have the 10% condition. Because if we have a small part of the population, we know that the probability is changing, but it's changing very little that it won't have an effect. So to make sure that we can go ahead with our inference, we need independence to make sure one trial is not affecting the other and the 10% populations to make sure that the samples are independent, or the probabilities are close enough. And the third one, normal sampling distribution. You guys know, you know, central limit theorem. You know, you gotta make sure that, you know, no matter what our sample looks like, our sampling distributions, the mean, the, the mean proportion, you know, is going to follow a normal curve if we have enough data. So we just gotta make sure that, you know, that's the thing about this. You know, the, the distribution of cochia plants might look skewed, but we're still doing the Z-test because we are sure, given by central limit theorem, that when you take all the means of the samples, you have enough data, you will get a normal distribution. So SRS is for representation, independence, to make sure that your trials are all independent, and normal sampling distribution to make sure that your data is large enough, so you can go ahead with a Z-test. That is the reasons why we have these conditions.
Yeah, really good, any, any questions on that at all? Any other questions at all about any topic we can help you guys with? We can go over a unit, we can go over, we have slides prepared for the errors here about type 1 and type 2 errors. On my AP exam, there were, there was a question about an error and describing why it's an error, which error it was. So yeah, it'll, it'll come up and a lot of people don't really focus on it. So we want, we wanna focus on everything we can, help you guys out.
And you know, just giving you guys some tips to practice. If you guys remember this year, chi-square, you know, usually it's a little bit of struggle for students because they gotta remember, you know, goodness of fit, homogeneity, independence, all these types of chi-squares, they're all gone from this year's exam. And so is linear regression. Well, you still need to know two-variable data, lines and, you know, residuals and all that stuff is still on the exam, but you don't have to do regression for linearizing anymore. So chi-square's gone, linear regression's gone. And if you look at what inference tests we have left, you know, you got one prob Z-test, you've got two prob Z-test, one mean T-test, two mean T-test. And the fifth one that some people have trouble with is the matched pair test. But a matched pair test is just, you know, a one-mean T-test for a difference. So, I mean, if you can think about it, some of those harder inference questions are gone. The one-prop and two-prop proportion tests are fairly simple, but the tricky ones are telling the difference between a matched pair test and a difference at two mean. So if you guys are looking for tips to study, that's one thing I would hit hard on. Because one proportion, two proportion tests are not that bad, but a lot of people struggle when differentiating between, you know, a matched pairs test and a two-mean T-test. So do you guys have any questions? Anything stats related, you can ask us. I mean, we're here to answer. You can ask us about errors, conditions. If you wanna know some of the weird stories behind stats, we're here to tell you that too. Can we do another FRQ? Do you have in mind, or is there a specific topic you would like, or just any FRQ? What topic would you like? Do you have a particular year in mind, or any topic, or concept? All of you guys in chat, if you have to pick one concept to practice, what type of FRQ would you pick? So something to very cool data, yeah, I think we could do that. I am trying to look for if there are any questions, just give me one.
Alright, I might've found one. Yeah, I got one, so I'm gonna try to pull up 2018, number 1. To do that, I'm gonna have to shot, I'm gonna have to stop sharing what I am right now and go. To do that, I'm gonna have to shot, I'm gonna have to stop sharing what I am right now, and go ahead and put it in the slides. And then I will come back when I get it in there.
So what exactly is it about least squares regression that you kind of find tough or confusing? Are there any specific concepts you want explained along with the FRQ? Okay, so you just want general review?
Yep, I'm working on it.
Same, okay. Yeah, um, some of the least square regression line stuff can be tricky, you know? A lot of people do find what, you know, part A, where you just have to write the equation of a line, but some of the interpretations are definitely tough, you know, like interpreting r, interpreting r squared, interpreting some of the other stuff on the, on the computer output you get. Derek, I think I just shared it. Does that work?
Yeah, that looks good.
Alright, so this question is from the 2018 exam. And it reads, "The manager of a grocery store selected a random sample of 11 customers." So that's good, 11 sam, 11 customers' random sample. "To investigate the relationship between the number of customers in a checkout line and the time to finish checkout." So our two variables are customers in a checkout line and the time to finish checkout. "As soon as the selected customers entered the end of a checkout line, data were collected on the number of customers in line who were in front of the selected customer, the time in seconds until the selected customer was finished with the, with the checkout." Okay, so again, you know, that sentence right there, did it really add a lot to the thing? I mean, they told you how they collected data, so if there's a question about collecting data, it's important. But really, in the grand scheme of things, that's just one of those things where they, you know, throw big paragraphs at you and try to confuse you or scare you. Oh, I mean, the important information is that we know it was a random sample, 11 customers. And basically, in that confusing sentence, all they said is, you know, when someone came up to the checkout, they timed them, and see how long it took, and they compared it to how many people were behind him. So, don't get confused with the wording in AP stats, a lot of people do that. They give you long paragraphs to read, but try to focus on the main stuff here. And then, right there, they give us the graph. You know, customers in line, times seconds. And you would kind of expect that, right? As the number of customers in line, you know, get bigger, the time it takes probably gets bigger. So you can sometimes just, just check the data and the relationship with intuition. Um, so, we know 11 samples, customers in line, there's 11 dots, and they're given, you know, time it takes. And it looks like someone has already drew the best-fit line on there. And this is the computer output you get. So, just real quick, you know, let's, before we look at the question, just let's look at this. So, customers in line, you know, that's our um, X variable. And what we're predicting here is time. So X variable is customer in line, and then the constant, this is kind of like y equals mx plus b. Um, we're not really worried about here, this here, you know? Um, we're worried more about the relationship between y and x. So, I mean, almost always I've seen that, you know, this constant row is ignored, unless you're writing the equation of the line, of course. But when you're doing like stuff with SE, or r squared, or this stuff, you know, don't really worry about it. So, part A said, "Identify and interpret in the context the estimate of the intercept for the least squares regression." So, well, there actually is a question about intercept here. Um, so intercept, y equals mx plus b. That happens when our x is zero, right? So if our x is zero, we've got zero customers waiting in line. And where is our um intercept? It's this constant right here. Our constant right here is our intercept, 72.95. So it is saying, on average, when we have zero customers in line, the average waiting time is 72.95 seconds. Now again, you might argue, you know, that's not realistic, you know? If you have zero customers in line, how does that happen? But it just asked you to identify and interpret it. If it would have asked, is that number significant, that would have been a different question. But here, all we care about is that for zero customers, the best of, best line of fit predicts 72.95 seconds. Um, there's a lot of stuff going on here, but remember, for this test, we're kind of ignoring this T and P stuff. You know, that's not really on the exam, because linear regression's not on the exam. Uh, and here's a classic question. "Identify and interpret in the context the coefficient of determination r squared." Again, r squared, you go to the computer output, and it should spell it out for you right there. R squared, 73.33%. That is your r squared. I mean, you can write that as a decimal, .7333. Some students get confused, and they pick r squared adjusted. Please don't do that. If it asks you for r squared, pick r squared. Please don't pick r squared adjusted. R squared just is not in the curriculum. It basically takes r squared and accounts for how many variables we have. So here, we only had two variables. You know, if we had three, four, five variables, our r squared would be the same, r squared adjusted would change. But don't even pretend the r squared just is there. Just completely forget about this number. Our r squared is .7333, or 73.33%. And what is it? There's a very typical template um interpretation of r squared. And this happens a lot in statistics, as you guys know, you know? You just say blank, 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 and then you just put it, fill in the blanks there. So you would say, 73.33% of the variability in y, or which is our time in seconds, is explained either by the regression model or customers in line. So you, basically, the thing you want to say there is percent of variability in y. So our y variable here is time. So you want to say, about 73.33% of the variability in time it takes for the customers in the checkout line is explained by our least square regression line, or by customers in line. Um, and the third question asks, "One of the data points is an outlier. Circle the point on this scatter plot and explain why." Okay? If we go up here and try to figure out which one's the outlier, I mean, can you guys tell me the coordinates of the point which you guys think is the outlier? Just in the chat. Type out which point do you think is the outlier? On this graph right here, where is the outlier?
So if you notice, um, there's that black line, that's our estimated least squares regression line. Um, we're looking for anything out of the ordinary that wouldn't be expected, just from looking at that line alone. So we're gonna see the point down by three customers in line and less than 250 seconds. That's our outlier. And we want to be careful not to just say, the outlier is where there are three customers in line. Because if you notice, there's two data points for three customers in line. There's one for that less than 250 seconds, and there's another one up closer to the line, that's between 500 and 700, 750 seconds. If we just say, the outlier is where there are three customers in line, they're not going to know if we're talking about the lower one or the higher one. So we have to be very specific to show them we know which one is the outlier.
Yes, great point, you know? You want to tell them, you know, don't make them read your mind, just put it on paper that, you know, about the point, three customers in line in about 60, 70 seconds is our outlier. And make sure you read the question. The question asks for an outlier. And you got to maybe justify too, why it's an outlier. Well, you could say two things. You could say it's, it's far from the least square regression line, or it doesn't fit the trend. Or you could say it has a high residual, which means, you know, clearly that its distance from the least square regression line is relatively high compared to the other point. So, and that's one thing you want to say, you know? About outliers, you want to compare it to the other points. You, you just don't want to say that it's far away. You got to say, it has a high residual, or it's much further away, compared, relative to these other data points. And again, read the question. The question asks for outlier. This question, this point is an outlier because it has a high residual. You know, there's some um vocab terms here that kids get confused with, you know? Like leverage point. Is this a big leverage point? No, because it's not that far from our mean, or our middle of the data here, you know? Leverage points are points that are, you know, sort of further away from the mean, and can really change the line. So, the question asks for outlier, not leverage or influential point. So make sure, when you use your vocab, you know, don't just try to put any words on there to think, you know, I can impress the reader with my vocabulary, and it'll give me the points. You know, just say what you mean and mean what you say.
Yes, that about sums up that fair response question. We have time to go over, any last questions? Um, any specific topics? We're here for you guys, um. Yeah.
I mean, FRQs on any other topic, or just a concept overview? I mean, some, sometimes students don't want to really do an FRQ, they just want to, you know, learn about the concept once again, just review some of the basics. Um, whatever you guys want to do. Just type out in the chat. And you can ask questions in the ask-a-question box, or topics, concepts, FRQs, anything. Feel free to ask whatever you want. And if you want to hear stories about how, the history of statistics, we could do that too. But you guys are probably more worried about the AP exam. So really, anything statistics-related, we're here. What kind of statistics questions do you guys have? I did find another um, least square regression line FRQ, if you guys want to go over another one. But I don't know if you guys want to do the same topic twice. Um, we also have a slide for errors prepared. Type 1 error, type 2 error, alpha, beta, that kind of stuff. So just type out in the chat if you guys want to talk about, you know, more least square regression line stuff. This question, the one I found, is a little bit harder. So, I mean, if you want to do that, or if you want to go over errors and power, because that's a hard topic, or just any other concept. Just pick whatever you would like in the chat. Let us know. What topic do you guys want? Errors, power, or least square regression line, or just something totally different? So what do you guys want? Just type out in the chat. Errors? Least square regression line, or just nothing? Or do you have any final questions, or comments, or thoughts, or worries, or anything?
Alright guys, so if that's it, if we don't have any more questions? Um, actually, yeah, so on May 21st, that is our big five-hour cram finale. And actually, Krish and I will be leading the first two and a half hours, and then we'll have our stats teacher, uh, who's actually a teacher, he'll be teaching the last two and a half hours. So that's a really good option. It's the night before the exam, we'll review everything, it'll be a lot of fun. So we hope to see you guys there. Um, but beyond that, thank you for coming. Anything, anything further, real quick?
Yeah, and I think the cram session is planned for 4:00 PM Eastern Time, and it should go to 9:00 PM Eastern Time. So you know, if you're in any other uh time zone, you can adjust, so 3 Central Time to Mountain Time. Yes, Jay-Z, that is one of those things. And, you know, it has been asked in a previous exam, so it's pretty likely. And I think it's more likely now, because, you know, everyone has internet and books with them now. So, you know, they're not really going to ask you just list the conditions most likely. And if they do, they're going to put it in a weird scenario where, you know, you can't just copy and paste. The one big thing I think a lot of people struggle on the AP Stats is putting stuff in context. So first of all, make sure you put everything in context. But yeah, 2016 number five, the second one, where it says to make sure they're 10. So first of all, you need to realize, you know, it's a two prop, or it's a proportion test. And NP and NQ, you know, or NP and N times 1 minus P has to be more than 10. And they're getting on that condition. And we know that condition is to establish normality, you know? Because we're doing a Z test. So yeah, in that question, they were making sure you knew that the NP more than 10 condition is for normality, to make sure that you're allowed to do a Z test. But yes, that is a good example of what you might be asked. Organizing notes for general test taking, okay? We will sort of organize like a chart or something during our cram finale, so you can use that. But I wouldn't get too many notes, because then you're going to get carried away. You're going to think, you know, I'm not going to study that much and just use my notes. Because, trust me when I say this, you're going to be rushed for time. And they're making sure you're rushed for time, because they don't want cheating, or, you know, plagiarism, or collaboration. So yes, you can make notes, and I would just make, you know, sort of basic notes. Interpretation of R squared, interpretation of, you know, like one of the recent questions they asked in a practice test was, "What does a standard deviation even mean?" You know, when you say that something has a standard deviation of 2.3 units, you know? What does that number even mean? And most students couldn't answer it, because they knew what standard deviation was, but they couldn't write it in words. So make sure you know interpretations of things, because numerically, not much is going to be tested on the exam. So things like central limit theorem and stuff, those are just concepts will be more important. But yeah, I would organize like the main principles. I would put my conditions on there, my main conditions and the reasons for them. But, you know, a lot of like the calculator stuff is gone this year. So just worry about the main principles and just a couple theorems of statistics and those interpretations, which I think is more important.
Right, yeah, just, just have a good grip on all of the procedures you've learned in your stats class. So, I mean, basically, that inference portion of the course with all of the different tests and confidence intervals. We really do need to know what they're doing, why we do them. And, you know, the main function of stats is really, like we were saying before, taking a sample, because we can't get information about the whole population. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a need for stats. It's only reasonable to be able to get information on a small portion of people. So stats is taking that small information and generalizing it to the population. So if we know how that connects from our tests to giving us the conclusion that we want, I mean, that's, that's a really big idea there.
Any last minute questions, concerns, thoughts?
Yeah, of course. Thanks for sticking through with us, guys. We're happy to help you. So, May 21st will be that five hour cram finale. Get your spot there. We'll have a lot of good stuff going on. Yeah, thanks for coming, guys. This concludes our Q and A session.
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys. And then hopefully, we'll see you on May 21st for Eastern.
Alright, see you, guys.